Thank you all for coming and giving up your time I should have the last few days helping everyone. This is a special meeting of city council, we've allowed the press and public to be aware of it. We have two items on our agenda. I've asked for a city administrator to give us the status of the emergency conditions that we're still operating under as of today, as well as the county is operating under emergency conditions. Opcon 1 if you like that kind of talk, which is kind of confusing for most people. And then we'll move on. So, take whatever time necessary, I'm certain there's some questions that we need to go through.
Okay, so Opcon 1 is operating condition 1, which is technically is as bad as it can get as far as operating conditions go. And as you all know, based on some communications from me, I was a little surprised when the county went to Opcon 3 when they did, because at first we were monitoring Joaquin and things were getting better for Joaquin. But they clearly knew what they were talking about, they were warning us about the rainfall that we could expect, and they were perfectly on point with the predictions about when we would start receiving that rainfall and the quantity that we would receive. So National Weather Service and County Emergency Preparedness did really well in guiding us to be, you know, to anticipate what occurred. As you all have heard from the news media, this was a thousand-year flood, and as a thousand year floods go, we actually, or as we're beginning to toggle over into recovery mode, we have fared a little bit better than some other places. The county remains in Opcon 1 as we do, operating condition 1. It's a little bit difficult to tell at this point what exactly is driving that, although they still have quite a few roads that remain closed in the county. I think we are very close to being able to open all of our roads, and I know that the county is monitoring what is happening with the flood conditions in the upstate or in the Midlands, because there's some concern that those floodwaters may ultimately migrate back this way. So we've got to monitor that in the weeks going forward. I have to just take a minute to tell you all that you, as elected officials, have been really wonderful through this. You've been supportive and guiding and quick to respond for these emergency meetings and out there among your constituency and talking to people, and it's been just really impressive with, you know, the way you all have handled this as the policy-setting body. And this is just the beginning. We have a lot of recovery to get through. This is a little bit different from what we experienced during Hurricane Hugo, but it is very similar in many ways, too. And then also, I want to say, the citizens of the island, both those that live here all of the time and our visitors, although we've gotten some really, I wish we had recorded all the humorous questions that we've gotten, but everybody's really been, for the most part, we've only had a couple of occasions where we've had, you know, some lack of cooperation and had to do some behavior modification. But for the most part, everyone has listened to the policy-setting body, they've listened to the public safety personnel and reacted accordingly, which was really good. And to the team that makes up the departments of the city, you just could not ask for a better group of people. People show up without being called to come into work. You know, before I've ever had even time to get on the phone and start calling people to come in, they're awake, they already know what's going on, and they're headed in. So, and we're talking about some middle-of-the-night, early-morning kinds of calls, and it's just really uplifting to work with people who come in and put in that kind of time, and there's never any thought given to inconvenience, or lack of sleep, or any of those things. They just get here and do what needs to be done, and they're continuing to do what needs to be done. So, really proud, you know, of that. And just little sidebar stories, because I think it's always good to know, you know, sidebar good things. We have managed to remember to take care of some of our special needs citizens during this time, and a whole host of different people with the city team have made time to go check on those people, to call those people, make sure they're okay, and take them food if they couldn't get out to get food. And I think we're probably the only local government that I've ever known to offer concierge service on garbage pickup. We're gonna, we're going to make up a tee-shirt for Donny Pitts and, you know, call it concierge service for garbage pickup. And you probably will never know this if I don't tell you, but obviously, we've got members of the city team who came to work and had no problem getting to work, but could not get home, and I don't know if those people have been able to get home yet or not.
They will be.
Tonight.
Tonight.
So, for the first time since this has started, we have some members of the staff that could not get home for what I call the rest and recovery time that it takes. They made appropriate arrangements and spent the night here to be able to, you know, be boots on the ground at the light of day to start work again. So, I wanted to share those stories with you, because those are always nice and uplifting things. And then, of course, we got up this morning and Hollywood was here. So, that was great, too. And so, for Desiree, too, she got to be the new kid on the block for about that long, and now she is a seasoned veteran, because there was no choice but to jump in and swim or not. And so, she's done a great job of interfacing with the team as the new person, so kudos to her for being able to do that. The documents that you have in front of you are not anything that you have to make decisions about tonight, but they are hot off the press. It will show you a draft timeline of everything that happened over, and it doesn't include everything. We will be refining it, because we threw it together as fast as we could, but we tried to keep records as time was going on. But all of the things that occurred since this started, we've tried to put together a timeline on, and as we refine it and remember other things, we'll probably add to it. The other piece of important information is this supplement to local initial damage assessment. As we toggle into recovery mode, there's some things that you need to know about how this works. And some of you had experience with the city during Hurricane Hugo, so this will be vaguely familiar to you. And I will tell you that when they sent us the first batch of forms and paperwork to fill out, that was the moment that I went, "Oh, yeah, I remember this." I mean, it was, FEMA is a paperwork agency, and so we now have to gather all the documentation to fill out this paperwork. And we will need help from our citizens in order to be able to do this. And I want to make sure, I want to make the point here, and I want to make sure that you all make the point, you know, just looking at things riding around the island, you don't see what you would probably think of as catastrophic damage. But we need to know, the city needs to know, and FEMA needs to know about all of the damage. So, if you have friends, neighbors, or anybody that you know has sustained some damage, either rain coming in, damage associated with flooding, or a tree falling in the yard that caused some damage to a house or something, please urge them to call Douglas at the 886-9912 number, or reach him by email, dcur@iop.net. We have the responsibility of filling out these forms with the addresses of everything that sustained any damage, whether it's insured damage or not. So, we've got the responsibility for doing that, and we know about a few places, because you can look at them from the outside and tell. But we're beginning now to hear stories from people about flooding and things of that nature, and we need, we have to report that to FEMA. So, we need for you all to try to get that information to us so that we can get, we can get these forms filled out. Yes, sir?
Linda, as I asked you before, and you gave me the affirmative, but just for everybody's purpose, by posting on Facebook, asking our public if they've had damage, if they have, maybe to email it to Douglas, the address and the estimate of damage, would that be a good way of doing it?
Yeah, any way that we can get the information would be helpful. If we can just get an address and Douglas can make arrangements to go by there, that would help us. Anything, because most of what we've had so far has come from department manager level of somebody that we have seen putting out trash, or sofas, or whatnot, and so we've gone by there and said, you know, "What happened?", and we've gotten the information that way. But we really need some interaction with us, some of it needs to be coming to the city. Yes, sir?
As far as all rental properties or the second home, right near that, in 6% houses that are non-residents, are we going to send something out from the building department asking for them to check their property and report in?
I don't know that we really have time to send something out. The way this works is the FEMA reaches out to the state, the state reaches out to, the state then reaches out to the county, the county reaches out to us, they give us this stack of forms, and we have to fill out the forms. So, excuse me, what we would need to know is, is it a 6% house or a 4% house, and we're going to check that. So, it really doesn't matter for purposes of these forms.
No, I'm talking about, obviously, 4% houses are residents, any other properties, second homes and rental properties, where the owners of the house may not be here. And, you know, let them know the critical nature of a timeliness.
Right.
So, either, do we collect email addresses for these properties?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of that, your question, sitting here, we certainly could ask the property manager, we're in steady contact.
Okay.
All of the property managers just convey the same message.
There you go. And I like Councilman Carroll's idea about Facebook, but I would also recommend an ad in the Eye on Eye that suggesting you get that information into system if possible, too.
That would be too late.
Right. We've got to get this in pretty quick. And we are posting it on our news releases, we've been saying that, we've been tweeting it and putting it on our Facebook page. So, we've been trying to do what we can, and the news media has been pretty helpful to us in getting the information out. The other important community, there are two other important community things to know, unless something has changed in the last few minutes, the disaster declaration that we first got, emergency services. So, the first declaration that you heard that President Obama made, what that did was that afforded the state resources from the federal government, not unlike the disaster medical assistance team that Chief Graham serves on, but it gave us all of those swift water rescue teams that came in, those kinds of things. So, that was a declaration that brought us federal military resources and federal specialty-trained people. The one that you heard this morning was an approval for what's called FEMA Category A and Category B, and that is emergency protective measures and also debris management. So, in other words, FEMA funding is being made available for those things. We do not yet have the full declaration for all of the categories, and this sheet is set up for all of the categories. So, you'll notice at the top of the sheet, it's got Category A is debris removal, B is protective measures, and again, I don't know whether or not the changes, but the goal is to get A through G. And C is roads, streets and bridges, D is water control facilities, E is buildings and equipment, F is public facilities, and G is park recreations and others. And one of our biggest categories, probably the greatest expense that I think the city may see, falls into G, which is beach erosion. So, that is, the hope is that we are able to get a declaration that covers those things. There are two other important things for you to know related to conveying information to citizens. One is, it is time now for them to go ahead and go on FEMA's website and file for assistance. And in that filing for assistance, it's very easy, you put in your address, and I tried to do it so I could make sure it does work, it's going to pop up and tell you there's no disaster declaration for your address, but if you keep reading in the fine print, it goes on to say how far we are in it. But you fill out the form saying what has happened, and that kind of gets you in the queue. The good thing about that is, whether you're approved for any kind of assistance or not, that gives you the ability to go to the next step, and Councilman Ward was kind enough to notify me today that the announcement has been made, that there are tax benefits, which will be, that sounds funny to say, there were tax benefits to enduring a disaster. But if you're not approved, then that gives you more ability to make changes relative to your tax situation. And this information is very important, because it talks about those things that you may be able to do, some of which are immediate in terms of amending existing returns. It also gives extensions of deadlines for those people who may be facing an October 15 deadline right now, they can get extensions to those deadlines because of this disaster. So, this piece of information is important for citizens, we'll be posting it on our website, and also to go ahead and get in the queue for the FEMA assistance on the website, too.
And I just looked it up, it's FEMA.gov.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Linda? There's an 800 number two that you can call.
Correct.
Well, one of the things in the IRS proclamation today was, the people that are facing a 10:40 extended deadline of October 15th, which I have a lot of clients who are, it's extended all the way up to February 16, 2016.
So, and all of that's detailed in here, so it's really good to encourage, most particularly people who've had some, either facing that deadline, or who've had some consequences associated with this storm, to pay attention to this guidance.
Why don't we post that on the website?
Yes.
Help people to get the access.
Yeah, we do intend to, we didn't get to it today, we got it today, but we didn't get to it today. So, those are, you know, ways that you all can help us, and citizens can help us in getting the job done that we need to do right now, in assessing the damage and trying to come up with estimates for the damage. The way this process will work is that, you know, we will, we will assess our damage, we turn that into the county, they add it to collectively, get an aggregate for what Charleston County is experiencing, that then goes into state EPD, and then that goes on to the federal government. So, the urgency, the immediate urgency for trying to get this all done, because we didn't have Category A and B approved yet, has sort of waned, but we don't want to let up, because we really need, because of some of the significant damage that's occurred, we really need beyond that.
As I understand it, counties have to at least reach certain thresholds in the expenses to be incurred.
Correct.
And that's why we have to get it to the county, so they can see that we've met a threshold, and therefore can be qualified, as we have for A and B, we need to do that for C through G.
Right. So, things, when you look at this sheet, and it's a lot of, and thank you to Debbie for pulling this together, and all the department managers for giving their input, you can see that some of these things are actual expenses on here, and some of these things are estimates. But one of the things that they have told us not to forget to take into consideration is that our drainage system, we saw where it was inadequate. I mean, some of the areas, we knew where it was inadequate, but in some cases, we saw situations where we were not aware that it was inadequate. And that now is the time to be able to say, now we've seen it, now we need to find out what it would cost to make it adequate, and those things need to go on this list. Likewise, the damage to the roads that occurred as a result of too much water on the roads, even the detours that we had on the roads, that now, like Cameron Boulevard, for example, has degraded significantly, because, in fact, Chief B moved that detour because it was getting too bad. That road is not designed, is not a highway, not designed for that level of traffic, and so it started deteriorating. We have numerous spots that we've already identified, I'm sure some more will show up, but we've got to capture, we haven't gotten to the number yet, but what the expense would be to restore those roads after they have degraded. And so, those are the kinds of things that we will now be working to try to get done. Obviously, we don't have an engineer, the city doesn't have a civil engineer on staff, and so we are a little crippled in that regard, and right now, we're at the mercy of the county giving us somebody, and as yet, I've not been able to get anybody from the county to give us some assistance. Just like what we will consider later on the agenda, you know, there may be a time when we need to consider bringing in an engineering consultant to be able to look at our overall system and say, "You need backflow prevention here, you need larger lines here, you need to reroute this this way", based on what happened. And those would be expenses, and we would be trying to pursue money to get, you know, some financial assistance. Those may be hazard mitigation projects, as opposed to straight FEMA projects, and generally, hazard mitigation are 50/50 in expense, but it's still something that needs to be considered going forward, because now we have seen a thousand-year flood. So, am I missing anything? Does anybody remember anything I'm missing and covering? A lot has happened in the last four or five days.
This was my first time in four years on council to see your command center in action, and I was extremely impressed with everybody.
Thank you.
I mean, everybody was extremely working hard, and it's not just one day, it was three days straight of working, so my hat's off to y'all for what y'all did.
Thank you. Thank you. The incident command system works, ours is, you know, kind of a little modified for how small we are, but the basic components and pieces of it work very well when you're faced with a situation like this. So, I was pleased. We probably violated a few protocols here and there, but... You know, we did, it wasn't without its mistakes, you know. I'll be the first to admit, in all of the sort of moments of disbelief, because Joaquin was not coming here, one of the typical things that we have in our things-to-do list is to go out on the beach and move all the beach trash barrels landward, make sure they're emptied, and get them out of harm's way. That did not get done. And as a result, we did have, we lost trash cans, and of course, we probably had some spillage of garbage into the ocean. And so, you know, in our after-action, there will be things that we will do to tweak. Other things are, clearly, we need to upgrade our operating conditions per department. It was obvious that it was out of date, and we noticed that when we were doing this. We've been doing the same things for so long that, you know, you often don't read these things, and then you read them, you go, "Wait a minute, we don't even have those phones anymore, we got to fix that." So, you know, in an after-action, we will need to be working on that. We also need to revise our internal operating plan as well. So, you know, all good critiques of things to do better next time. But we have a lot of work still ahead of us in the recovery going forward, to try to get recovery of the expenses that we've had, and then also perhaps some financial assistance to be better. I'm going to toggle on over into the beaches issue if the mayor's okay with it.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I do want, let me just take a moment and compliment the staff, as Linda has already done. Like you said, everybody was on station for all hours of the day, worked tirelessly, drove through water, moved water, spent nights away from home. We had some fire personnel here for, I heard, they couldn't count after 60 hours, so, but they were putting in the time necessary.
Right.
Not only is it time with us, it's time away from their own premises, and so they're devoted their time and attention to the citizens of this island. Obviously, they were comfortable that their family was secure, but there's still always questions about what's going on. But they were here with us, and I'm prouder than I can be for this entire team.
Thank you.
You're in a good group now, you know.
Fire by fire.
Yeah. And she was here, boots and everything, so...
Yeah, I knew that Desiree was going to be a winner with the city when she showed up the first time without being called to ask, and it was like, yay!
Except, except. She had a Yankee hat. You knew where I was going.
Yes.
Couldn't leave it alone. All right, let's move on to item B.
Okay, so, for all of these years that we've been monitoring our shoreline, and by monitoring, I mean paying for and keeping records on surveying our shoreline and knowing where our beach is and how much sand we have, not just on the area of the beach where we have had a chronic shoal attachment problem that causes episodic erosion, but up and down the entire seven miles of beach. One of the reasons why we always do that is because we were advised that if you ever have a storm event, the only way to recover your beach and to get any assistance is if you've got something to measure from. So, you know, those surveys that we've been doing all of these years over and over again will serve as the basis for determining the effect of this particular storm. Now, Mr. Bernstein, who is somebody who lives in the area that is most closely affected, brought in a before picture that is dramatic evidence of exactly what has occurred out on our beach. And so, we have that, but you actually need engineering data. So, the county in, and there are two ways that you get assistance for your beach when there is a circumstance like this. One is direct federal assistance, where it is a Corps of Engineers-handled project. And that is very much what the city of Folly Beach has. It is the Corps of Engineers that always does their beach restorations, it likely will be the Corps of Engineers in their post-storm work. And then there's a second category, which is the type that we would fall into, where there's just restoration of the beach, where local government contracts for the restoration of the beach. The county in their informal conversations with me had said, "We think we'll take some January flyovers that we did, and we'll do a flyover of the beach, and then we'll compare one to the other." And that's a little worrisome, because to me, based on what we have heard from our advisors who've worked with FEMA over a large number of years, Chris Jones, who did our beach management plan for one, and he does a great deal of work with FEMA, it's a little bit not as technical, it seems to me, as would be required, so I'm a little concerned that that might not be enough supporting information to give us, you know, what we need in order to have the data. So, I reached out to Coastal Science and Engineering and asked them, "If you came, A, could you do it? Can you get boots on the ground and get out here and get a survey of the entire shoreline done?", because their offices are in Columbia, they're without power, they're flooded, you know, the employees are scattered all over the place, A, is it possible? And then, how much would it cost, and how quickly could you turn it around? And so, I was able to text and cellphone calls with them to be able to get that information, which I was not able, they couldn't generate a proposal, because their servers were down and they were non-operational, but they were able to get together, put their heads together and compile the figure that you have before you tonight of $19,000. We would, you know, try to file for reimbursement for that amount if we get a disaster declaration, but there would be no guarantee that we would get that money back. But I think it, to have that survey done would afford us the best opportunity, I think, to get reimbursement. Now, the county tells me, when I discussed our September data collection with them, as using that as a basis point, they said, "Well, we would take your information or our information and file for whichever shows it to be the worst." So, it seems like to me, you know, there's no downside to doing it, other than the expenditure of money. So, you know, it's a contract in excess of $10,000, which, and we didn't put the, we had the mayor ready to exercise his emergency powers, but we never pulled that trigger. So, that's a decision that city council needs to make, and we felt like we needed to get them out there and working as rapidly as possible, so that's why we wanted to call this meeting tonight.
May I make that a motion?
Second. Motion seconded. They, when we had a discussion with them yesterday, they were talking about either the end of this week or early next week, depending on their own circumstances in being able to get here. We're already at midweek for ourselves, so we're only talking a few days before they would be here to do the survey. They wouldn't be doing the inlets, because that's a little more detail, and they probably wouldn't go the quarter-mile or so out beyond the surf line, because that's not beach, per se, as FEMA would define it, but they'll get us the material data that we need to make an application.
Mr. Mayor, under that same category, could we not look towards ATAX? Because, I mean, there are so many beach houses that generate...
To pay for this?
To help pay for this.
I would, well, okay, I would pay for this and all the other expenses, I would accumulate this under a disaster recovery fund.
Okay.
And then, we reimburse ourselves on any monies we receive back from FEMA or any other third party, that's why we have it.
Okay, I'm just throwing that out there, because I know of several people that had to move out, and that's money...
Oh, yeah, I would have used that if we didn't have that there, but that's why we have it there, so.
Yes, sir.
This is declared a disaster. Jimmy?
After Hugo, the Army Corps of Engineers restored the beach, and you said that they're not available now, well, I want to exchange it 20... not available now, why does change it 26 years?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Right, because they were here, and they also picked up debris, and have we asked about the opportunities with the Corps?
Sure. But I'm thinking probably one of those things is they need to know what needs to be replaced, which is the whole point of getting surveys done.
The Corps did all the work, virtually all the work to recover Sandy up and down, but they take responsibility, as they do for Folly Beach, for restoring all the beaches in New Jersey anyhow. So I don't, I don't know either why they were here 20-some years ago and not again. But frankly, they've never been the most efficient.
Well, they were right out here after Hugo. We didn't have any dunes at all. At high tide, you'd have water on Palm Boulevard because we had no dunes, and they were out here, I remember, pretty quickly.
I can certainly inquire about that difference.
Very good. Thank you.
Good. And Sandy?
With the Coastal Science, aren't we already under contract with them? Didn't we just pass $198,000?
That's for permitting for an offshore, the next offshore dredging project, if we ever get to it.
None of that contract could be modified to include this?
No, it's a totally different setting. That's going two miles, three miles offshore, trying to find a borrow site and doing all the biologics on that. That's a totally different scene. I mean, whether we can amend the contract to add this as a separate item, that's a contracting matter now.
But at the $198,000, the reason we were looking at that is that we had $200,000 available from the last...
Correct. And the status of that is that council has authorized entering into that contract. Right before all of this started happening, after council authorized it, the next step that I was going to take was to write the stakeholders and say that council had authorized entering into that contract. And, you know, we wanted to use, as half of it, approximately $100,000 of the stakeholders' money to move forward. And, you know, I have not taken that step yet, so.
So we haven't, we haven't moved forward?
I have not, I have not signed that contract yet.
Okay.
So we need to...
One more question.
Execute this. Yes.
We have, and we are doing on a regular basis, a beach monitoring on a regular, how often?
Annual basis.
Annual basis, sir. And the last time was?
The last time the project was, the 53rd area was surveyed, was September. I can't remember if that was the full, was the full length, so it was September then.
Okay.
And that, the results are on our website.
No, we haven't even seen the data yet.
Oh, I thought we posted it.
But this is the perfect time for them to do it, then.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, again, I like the idea of the counties will take whatever's worst.
Yeah, right.
But I don't necessarily believe that their flyover is going to be sufficient.
And we pay them on an incremental basis every time they do it? We pay them like in September?
We have a, we have, yes, we have a contract with them for this work, and as they do it, we have the contract, which is the aggregate amount that, you know, that we budgeted for, and then when they do the work, then they bill us.
So this can't be folded into that?
I think it's cleaner to keep it separate because this is storm-related, you know, and I just think it's...
Because the reimbursements may get sticked there.
Yes.
And there's a different, a little bit different scope here also. They're not going to be doing the full, they're not going to be doing the inlets, for instance, etc. All right. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Then Bill Jenkins is here.
I'd ask the water and sewer to be present.
I'll make him talk.
Let me...
Just inform us on what transpired at 41st Avenue, what the citizens can expect for the future. No, I want you to come up.
Phil doesn't want to talk. I will tell you, just, Bill's boss, Kristin Champagne, did send me a couple of page communication late this afternoon saying that she could not be here because her husband's a police officer and he's working, they have no daycare, and so she's, you know, homebound, so she couldn't be here tonight. But she did send me a couple of pages worth of explanation that I will bounce to you, but we'll put Bill on the spot here.
We'll get the Cliff Notes version from Bill.
Glad to have you.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name's Bill Jenkins. I'm with the Isle of Pals Water Sewer Commission. My title over there is Special Projects Administrator, man of many hats, as some of you all well know. We did have a problem at our forest trails plant as, you know, basically the way Kristin wrote it out, is no sewer system is confined. They're always designed to be somewhat floodtight, but not totally floodtight. So we do get inflow and infiltration from rainwater on the manhole covers and, of course, broken pipes that we can't see down below grade. We did have a problem that raised, came about, excuse me, about 3:30 a.m. Sunday morning. We had made some changes at our plant process, it's a new forest trails plant, to accommodate the amount of water that was coming upon us, but things got out of hand. Basically, down there at our plant, we have what we call an EQ basin, which is a holding basin for all the wastewater as it comes into the facility. It is 300,000 gallons capacity. She breached. She continued breaching for most of the day. Unfortunately, due to that, the actual process of wastewater treatment process couldn't keep up with the amount of water that was coming into the process for treatment, so we had to make, do some tweaking down there. But prior to our tweaking, we had a spill out of the plant itself. We had some sludge hit the ground. We made some adjustments in our process, got it back to producing the clean water that it was supposed to, kind of got that back on the norm. Our plant is designed for 350,000 gallons treatment. We were doing, we were pushing out 763,000 gallons of water is what we were treating. We actually pushed it to its limits. Its design capacity is around 623,000 gallons, max, but we pushed the envelope and forced it to do a little bit better, which gave us, bought us some time, you know, got back to making good water, putting out, you know, putting out through our discharge when the tide would allow it. Unfortunately, back to the EQ basin, we had no control over that. We can't go out and shut down our pump stations. If we do that, then we have it coming up in neighborhoods. So we contained it, and basically it was, as it was spilling over, we were running it back into the system by some drains that we have nearby. So we were just basically circulating through the system, through the EQ basin to the ground and back into the system, back into the EQ basin until things finally settled down. We've now got free board in the basin, so we're basically back to normal operation. We're still treating a lot of rainwater, you know, because of what we see on the roads and all. So that's where we're at today. Now, our Wild Dunes facility, we have a facility down there as well. We didn't really have any problems down there, thank God. She kept on chumming along. Again, we were treating more rainwater than when we do wastewater, but we were, you know, stayed within our limits that were put on us, you know, by regulatory agencies and so forth. So, but again, we're back to normal. Now, once this is all said and done, over with, and we can get back out there and start assessing the system, we budget each year about $28,000 towards infiltration and inflow and infiltration, INI as we call it, where we go out and we monitor flows in our pump stations. We have hour meters where we can see how long they run. So during rain events, if it rains on one end of the island and doesn't on the other, we can see how much water may be coming into the system, and we'll go down and start investigating, cammering the lines and looking for points of breakage or damaged pipes and stuff so that we can address that and prevent it from occurring in the future. And so once everything kind of gets back to a norm, we'll be back out in field doing this, which is an ongoing with the utility system. You know, I don't care how new the system is or how old it is, everybody has INI problems. And it could either be caused by, you know, aging pipes, other utility companies putting their utilities underground, breaking pipes, not telling anybody.
So what should the citizens do, knowing that there's been a discharge?
Well, we were required, we were required by DEHAC to put out notification to them and to the public whenever there's a spillage over a certain gallons. Of course, this one met it. We were about 90,000 combined overflow. And they directed us to make up a quick public notice and post them along the outfall line, basically the 41st Avenue ditch, to try to encourage people to stay out of the wastewater or the storm water, I should say, the wastewater, not knowing what's in it. You wouldn't believe the number of people walking through the driving road there.
Oh, we believe it.
While I'm sitting there tacking a sign to a telephone pole, you know, and I'm saying, you might not want to be standing in that stuff barefoot. But, you know, we were required to put out notices, which we did, and of course, we sent the notice to them so that they could see what we were doing.
So how long does the concern last?
Well, because the rainfall amount, the amount of water that was already on the ground, they felt that the dilution factor was there and with hopes that it would proceed on out with the tide. We talked to them today. They said we could basically pull down the notices at this point. So we've done that.
So it's your feeling that the citizens, I don't want to, well, I shouldn't say, can go barefoot again?
Well, I wouldn't, today I wouldn't recommend that until everything dries out well.
Okay.
But as far as the effect in that drainage area, I think there's been sufficient inflow, outflow of that tidal area where if there were any contaminants remaining, they've been washed out to the inner coastal waterway. Don't eat the oysters.
No, you know, I'm going to say this, but, you know, in future events, and hopefully there is no future, in your communication, you need to speak to the fact that the drinking water is not affected.
This is true. This is true. We had numerous calls about that.
Well, we did too. And not everybody who visits the island, lives here day to day and knows your number.
That's true.
So they call or they read, and they don't know who to touch, you know, what's going on with the drinking water. So we need to at least give them some certainty that that's not affected. Tommy's got a question.
The Q basin at the Wild Dunes is much larger because of...
No.
No, 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 no.
It's about the same size.
About the same size.
That's the, that's the outflow, that's after clean water.
Because, I mean, I tried to drive down 41st, and I saw where the water was, and there was just no way of getting down there. But what I also think we need to be wary of is trying to walk to the beach, and yet all these front beach houses that are on septic tanks. I mean, that water, to me, is just as bad as, was that 41st?
Mm-hmm.
And not only, not only just walking to the beach, but in the neighborhood, in the middle of the island.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, as we all know, only a small portion of this island is sewered. You know, I would say a third of it's sewered, and I'm not, I'm not going to include Wild Dunes in this factor here, but a third of the city of Isle of Pals outside of the gate is sewered, where the other two thirds is on septic tank. So when we have these high floodwaters like this, septic tanks burp up, and I'm going to say it, seen it's done, you know, experienced it. So yes, we do have a lot of contamination, you know, from that, along that area. And, you know, we try to address that in our communique, you know, that you don't want to be playing in puddles and whatnot like that.
It's not a concern to you that you took in twice as much water into the system?
Oh, it's a concern. Oh, yes, it's definitely a concern.
I mean, it's supposed to be, I've always thought it was a sealed system, but obviously it's not.
Well, you know, the way the waste systems are designed, and you'll see this in the little memo that Kristin sent over to Ms. Linda, that, you know, when a system's designed, they design it for both the capacity that's going to be introduced to it from the human side of it, and then they lay in a little fudge factor for if there's a, we'll call flood event, for sake of speaking, if there's a high rain event that may introduce other in there through INI. So, and not being sealed, we have all these gases and all that are in sewer, and if you look at a manhole in the middle of a road, there's usually one or two holes in it. And that's actually both for access and to help vent out some of the gases that may become trapped in the system because we don't, you know, want to be sitting there and lift the lid up and have all these sewer gases come up and hit us just as we pop our lids. You know, so, you know, they're not...